It is now 6:00 PM on April 4th, 2022. The City Council of Bel Air Beach will now come to order. Please join me in writing for the place of the reasons. Eddie, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Frank Baker?
Present.
Councilwoman Leslie Nataro?
Here.
Councilwoman Lori Roberts?
Here.
Councilwoman Julie Shirley?
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Sable?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dunn?
Here.
Mayor Dave Dallas?
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves?
Here.
And City Attorney Andrew Solomon?
Here.
Thank you, Eddie. Item one is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion. Question made by Frank Baker.
Also.
Second by Leslie Nataro. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Now we move to citizen comments. You'll have three minutes to address the council about anything that is not on the agenda. However, please do not expect an immediate response. When called upon, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to speak? Since we have no takers, we will move on to item three. This is a presentation, award of financial reporting achievement. This is mouthless, hang on, compare with me here. Award of financial reporting achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States in Canada to the Finance Department of the City of Bel Air Beach for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020. The award will be accepted by Heather... What did... What... What... Whatanoli?
Whatanoli.
Whatanoli, is she here?
Yes.
Okay, great. If you will meet me at the podium to accept the award, be right there. Okay, so everyone understands what this award is. I'm just gonna read it verbatim. "The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management." This certificate was awarded to Bel Air Beach, the Finance Department. However, we don't have one. Instead, I would like to present this to you. Next up, the presentation to the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Captain Lykan, are you prepared to give the law enforcement pamphlet report?
Very well. Okay, is everybody here? Mayor, everybody? It's good to be back, see some faces I'm familiar with, some newer ones, some people just moved around. It is always a pleasure to be here. I just want to take the time on the report, just kind of remind everybody that since your meeting is at the beginning of the month, we're always like a month behind. So typically, we'll be talking about March, but in your all's case, we're talking about February. So I'll go through that relatively quickly, and then I did identify one thing from March to bring to your attention, and if you have any questions for me, I'd like to answer any of those. So on your monthly report that you had, you had two larcenies in February. Other two, one was a trailer that was stolen by 15th, there was a construction area, excavator, excuse me, they stole the trailer out there. The other one, someone was doing yard work, a company was in here doing yard work at a house, and they left their chainsaw in the yard, then walked off. So both of them, with the trailer, I just read that report today, they've got a lot of good leads on it, so they're still working, and both of them were worked by detectives because the, obviously, the trail was a vehicle once, it'd be a grand theft, and then the chainsaw was found, so they're both being worked by detectives, so hopefully we'll have a solution to that down the road. Those are your big capers for the city. I did look into your traffic, you had a felony traffic, that was self-initiated, that's where the deputy was actually running laser radar, and then didn't stop for a laser, but saw they had a tag, their lights, the rear lights were out, stopped them on the first entry boat for how many times, so there was an arrest there. The other one unfortunately was a DUI, driving under the influence, that was another one where they were patrolling, somebody wasn't maintaining the lane, several times they sighted how they kept clipping into the brake lane, so they stopped that person, that person was intoxicated, so at least they were able to remove them from the roadway before they caused some serious harm. I looked through your activities, it's the same pretty much, the activity monthly, you know, a lot of its traffic style is direct to patrol, but it's geared towards what you're all, the citizens bring forward, you bring forward to us or to me, we'll go with me, we'll direct our patrols appropriately. And you don't have a huge, on your last page, crash, there was three crashes, so there's no roadway other than two on Thursday, there's no discernible pattern there. That's kind of the background of the old data. The one I found recently, probably already know about, was a crash out at Eighteenth and Gulf. We had another person unfortunately that was impaired, they were driving, said they looked down or whatever, but the nuts and bolts of it was the lady was impaired. Bearded off, hit one of the, hit one of the paltries, the median there, got out, walked off, a resident had seen the person walk off, gave us a direction. K-9 guy here, K-9 tracked, tracked the, tracked the person down to Bay Shore, 19 Bay Shore. 1907 Bay Shore, we actually found her hiding in the bushes. So they gave us the direction, the K-9 got, but finally, we need to report, so I sent it to the city to see if the insurance, obviously, could take care of that too. But thankfully, this isn't, there's not as much going on in the city as in other cities and stuff, and I think it's good, obviously, that you don't have a crime, crime scene or anything out here, but that's kind of the gist of that, more reason really here, if you have anything, if you're on the phone and stuff, if you have anything, if you have questions for me.
Thank you. Counsel? Chainsaw caper, that was an active, the guys were currently active working on the chainsaw, did I understand?
It was a company that was doing some type of yard work, what in the report said, so they were doing yard work, left it in a yard, I don't know if they were out back or whatever, but it supposedly walked off, they had some lead, it's still active, so they took us to one place, we didn't get where we needed to go, but that place, but there's some other stuff that were working.
Which section, which section of town was it?
That was, that was in order at one point. I thought it was up near where the, where the trailer was stolen.
That's what I think.
It's like us, I'm sorry, I have two packets here, trying to make myself aware of everything. Chain saw stolen, it was actually they reported up by 115, Sixth Street. 115 Sixth Street.
Anyone else? Citizens? Next, counsel. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Good to see everybody. Up next is code enforcement.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Plodk, for the record, and I want to congratulate everybody in due positions, and again, I've got a special guest that I'm going to be introducing to you here in just a few seconds. As far as code enforcement, we still continue to go after some of these contractors that are not licensed and doing work, they, with permits, we've got another one today. And as far as some of the other violations, they pretty much slowed down as far as some of the nuisance violations that have been going on. I have been working with Commissioner Gunn, or Commissioner Gunn, on the status sheets that we do every month, and we've kind of revamped that a little bit, so starting this month in April, it will show all the events that, again, take place, but it's gonna have just, it's gonna be broken down a little bit more. I believe we had close to 60% of the stuff that I did was on building permits and catching those contractors. And with that being said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Larry Thomas. You've heard me speak of him in the past, this is a gentleman that works for the License Board of Pinellas County, this is the man that I call when I have an issue, and he's always quick to respond, and without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Thomas to you.
Thank you, thank you. Again, as he said, investigator Larry Thomas, Mr. Mayor, I'm here, we kind of work hand in hand, like you said, he reports them to the licensing board and me directly, and I do the research. The main thing, like you mentioned, is permitting, there's a lot of lack of permitting, and we're not just finding unlicensed contractors to permit. I think the first call we were on, we had a, he found a 20-year construction licensed contractor that did build permit, and this, this structure was a three-story structure with a balcony, and they went in there, did some demo work, and it was a good cast because we, you know, protected the public from that, so that's kind of our whole mindset. Our role is, in the community, is education and compliance, simple as that. If we have to cite, we'll cite. Our citations, they start at $500 a pop, and, you know, we just, we just, we, our governor, the 49, state statute 49, and the county ordinances, so. Again, I don't know if you've heard, I mean, obviously, you might be getting some calls, and we don't mean to disrupt anything here, but we just want to make sure that people know that we're out and about, and we're out there for the public. We operate, the licensing board operates under the Special Act, and it's one of seven special acts of the county in, in safety work. And what that means is that we govern all, over all of these counties, so there are only three investigators in the county, I'm one of three, I have the mid-county, I work from Gulf all the way to the, to the bay, so, and then we have one north county and south county, so there's a lot of unlicensed contracting and unpermitted work going on. And we can't catch them all, with Deputy Plodk, you know, like I said, he's the eyes and ears out here, and that's probably one of the reasons that we haven't seen us lately, unless we roll upon it and we're out controlling, we just don't catch everybody. Anyway, thank you for your time, any questions I can answer for anybody?
Counsel? I'd like to thank you for what you're doing, and obviously, if people are beginning to figure it out, maybe this isn't the place to do it.
Yes, sir. And the whole idea is, again, protecting citizens of the city, you know, to make sure everything is done properly, so we don't have any issues, so stand for any questions.
Counsel? How about the citizens, if you want to have a question? Back to counsel a little more time.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, next up, we have the quarterly board reports. Currently, we only have a report from Park and Rec, unless one of the other boards has decided that they are presenting. Nope, I don't see any takers, so let's hear it, Park and Rec.
Hi, everyone, it's great to see you. Okay, so I haven't done quarterly board report in a couple months, I missed the last one, so I apologize about that, I had a family emergency, so backtrack a little bit, but I'll be quick. So the community events that we had in the past six months include Halloween, Christmas, I'd like to thank everyone that attended, I thought they went well, it seemed like everybody had a great time, and we were pretty much on point with our plan. We plan to repeat a version of the Halloween and Christmas with your approval. Couple things that we would do differently, or if anybody has any suggestions, we'd love to hear them, but possibly, we'd like to incorporate charity with the Christmas event, which we didn't do last year, just heard that they think about it, whether we bring in a wrap gift or something like that. And then Halloween, it's great that this room is being booked again with so many weddings and whatnot, but there were no Saturdays open in October, there's weddings every day, so we're looking at possibly a Halloween event on a Sunday afternoon, like late, but you'll get more information on that next month. But again, just recapping from last year, they went well, and we were happy with how they went, and all the participation, all the volunteers and all the participants. We have sold Park and Rec over 200 Bel Air Beach t-shirts, tank tops, beach towels, koozies, hats, and license plates, and I know people suggest other things, like, not actually a Yeti, but like the insulated coolers, or maybe like little tote bags, so all of that goes through Kyle and Lynn, and so like, suggestions are always welcome, because like, if people want it, we'll have it made, so. Again, just call or email, that'd be great. Another event that we had that wasn't so much, it kind of fell into the health and wellness category, was the Health and Wellness Fair in January. We had over 23 health and wellness care providers, from daycare to chiropractic care, dentists, and we had about eight residents that attended that, so thank you, I think everybody got a lot out of it that attended. We're hoping to repeat it again next January, and hopefully have better weather, because I know it was so cold and icky out that day, but I think that kind of kept people at home. But overall, I think that everyone that attended really got a lot out of it. And then, on another note, there are also potential sponsors for future events, because they're local businesses, and we made a lot of contacts. We still do have the yoga with Tara, both indoors on Monday and Wednesday, and then outside at the beach at Morgan Park, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday at nine. As it's getting warmer outside, the standard catered will resume, and we have had four successful blood drives since the last time I was up here, so thank you for everybody that participates in those. As far as the park and beach accesses, we survey our 13 parks and beach accesses at least once or twice a year, we're in the middle of one right now, everybody will report back, there's four members on the Park and Rec board right now, so we're hoping to get a few more. But we survey those, I know our management staff takes excellent care of those, but we just kind of get like another set of eyes on them, we take some pictures, and then we have like a recap sheet that Kyle has put together to say like, this was finished, whether it be a leaky sink at Morgan Park, or rust, or, you know, it could just be anything, so we just, you know, it's just four more people who are putting eyes on those and taking pictures and bringing them back to our meetings. And then, of course, we're having the beach cleanups every month, on the first Saturday, we are involved with Keep Pinellas Beautiful, now, so they provide some of our supplies, which we much appreciate, and I'd like to thank everyone that comes out for those. Last month, we had 46 people, and this month, we had four, but I'd like to thank the diehards, because it looked like the heavens were gonna open up and rain down on Saturday, so, anyway, so we will come to one year of each cleanup, I think, in June, so again, those are going well, and it's just a nice little hour down at 19th Street, so if you haven't, we invite you to join us, and it's always on the sign, so you know the date when it's coming up. And, okay, so 2022, we, you guys voted on, so last month, the event, it's April 30th, from 4:30 to 7:30, it's flying to the moon, so it's like a Frank Sinatra rap hat type music, and we're gonna have a Italian food vendor, they're gonna sell pincet by the slice, and soft drinks, and then obviously, you can bring your own, you know, picnic baskets or whatever you want to do, but it should be nice, and hopefully we have good weather, and we have a good turnout for that. And, let's see, what else? We are looking into, because we've had it suggested several times, I saw it in past Park and Rec board's meetings, but it's been brought up about having a Bel Air Beach Community Foundation, so it's separate, separate from Park and Rec board. I've been trying to set up a meeting with the person who leads it for the City of Bel Air, and they were having a hard time, like, touching base and getting that set up, but if anybody has any information, I know we need an attorney to go over the details of it, and then just basically, it's a non-for-profit, it'd be very similar to the Garden Club that did the benches and like some of the artwork that's out and about, it would be like that, and I know that they, to my knowledge, they're not doing that anymore, so it's been suggested that it would be nice if we could do something like that again. So if anybody would like to join in on that, or has any input, if you could call me, I would appreciate that. And, I think, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel? Questions? Citizens?
You mentioned additional board members, how many are you looking for?
I think there's supposed to be five, and then two alternates, so...
Are you going to need an attorney, is what you're saying, is this project going to go forward?
Or so, in the beginning stages, that, I just think to someone to go over the paperwork and to make sure that, like, you know, it's an application that you submit to get the nonprofit status.
Mr. Mayor, can counsel approve them using our city attorney? Go ahead. I don't see why not. There's gotta be someone to respond to.
Use the way. Well, I didn't even vote or...
I don't really think he's directional, counsel, it's out.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that. And then, on another note, I did mention that we did put together a sponsorship program, like for possible vendor, people to sponsor the events that we're having, and that is in your hands too, so hopefully you guys will get to vote on that next one.
This is probably asking a lot, but what kind of revenue does people create, items generate?
Oh, we're not generating any revenue, we weren't trying to make money off this system.
Okay, so my next question is, but we've got 200 people here in Bel Air Beach, so...
We do.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and, you know, I have a few bullet points on here, the sponsorships would be great, and it's always on the website that if you would like to sponsor an event, please call me, but because there's four of us, and we can't really talk outside meetings because of the sunshine laws, we're not really fundraisers, like, you know, it's, we try to stay within the budget that the council approves for us, if we're gonna do something outside of that, we would sell tickets, like, it would be worth the money that we're selling the ticket for, but for the most part, like, the community events to get people together, it's basically $2.50 a household per year to pay for this, I mean, it's not like we're draining the city budget, and it's, you know, there are a lot of work, and we'd love to do them if people want them and want to attend them. And again, like, I know Kyle and I have a list of like people that we're gonna email out once the sponsorship, if people approve it, that we're gonna send the sponsorship proposal to, but as far as us, like, knocking on doors in other cities, because we don't have a lot of businesses in Bel Air Beach that we can actually ask for money for, we're always going out of this area. And so, as I mentioned earlier, with the Health and Wellness Fair, I met more, I know they were all health and wellness type businesses, but, you know, they would be possibly interested, and I don't have a problem contacting people that I know, but I don't really want to just blindly knock on doors and ask people to give us money, because it's just not my jam.
Any other questions, counsel? Uh, citizens, yes, sir? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Thought Harbor, 16th Street. I just have a question about the idea of the foundation, and the idea would be, we talked about events and activities and partner creation, I would like to solicit the idea that private citizens could donate to the foundation, and use the foundation for sponsorship of city events. The idea is that there's a sponsorship perpetuity for the city events, but would we have the ability to offer money through the foundation as a funding mechanism to pay for some of these events? And then the other aspect of the, of the foundation is the question of, would we have the ability to build a foundation bucket list of things that citizens would like to see done, that we could fund through a foundation, but not necessarily through the city budgets? So example being, is maintenance of the east nuts and things like that.
Thank you very much, thank you. That's it?
That is, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item six, and we're moving on to the city attorney report.
Mayor and counsel, two things, one, I have coordinated, and we're in some of the process with the city clerk, picking a day for a workshop for the board for sunshine law and ethical presentation. It's probably gonna be about an hour and a half, with each section, it'll take me about a half hour, so we're trying to coordinate that for a workshop for counsel, that hopefully can be coming up, maybe next week, we're working on. Secondly, pursuant to counsel's direction, I have talked to the city manager about drafting an addendum to his employment agreement for future needs that counsel will have during the budget process, so we have a simple one that we're working back and forth, once we finalize that, we'll bring it to counsel to vote on, and that's it.
Counsel, questions? Citizens? I have to answer. Thank you very much, Mr. Solomon.
Can I just ask, just ask one question with regards to the addendum to the contract? Is that something we could add to our workshop and have it, short counsel meeting, to review it, is it that close that we get out to the workshop date, because...
I would say it's pretty close.
Can't wait.
Right. The city manager and I talked before the meeting, and we were just discussing to make sure that the compensation for time and travel, as was discussed, would be included in there, but it's really other than that, yes, we can put it on.
Thanks very much. All right, item seven, city manager report.
Mr. Reeves? Mayor and counsel, in your package, you've got the current month's report, the 12th and 13th bid is open tomorrow, we did get the bid back from the local C-Wall, it was about $25,000 over, but we were actually on like $7,000 over, it's a 200 budget, it was $25,000. Came in at $225,500 for Bo Grand, of course, Seventh Street, C-Wall, and C-Wall, 16th Street. The RFP is out to the city attorney, it's due the 12th, and I can see... And then the code section, we'll review that next, get that to the board. The proposed budget draft is ready to go, we're gonna get that to the audit committee slash citizen advisory committee, and RFP is scheduled for next Tuesday at 5 o'clock, but it's in place. The financials and the members, if you didn't get a copy of the budget calendar, it's there for you to... And then, we're scheduling the garage sale for May 7th, so we'll go back to that, this advertising board, they are assigned maybe a little bit, that's all that.
Counsel? Citizens? I take it, counsel? Linda, we had a typically advertised, the city's garage sale.
Usually, we put it in the Tampa Bay lines, and the 12th House, all the RFP, and then we'll put it on the website, you can sign up, and we put signs in each street, and say, here's a 16th Street.
All right, I'm assuming we're still going to figure out somebody to keep everybody on the same side of the street?
We're gonna get new signs that say, parking this side... We're gonna get new signs that say, "Parking this side for the airway," and that's the side where we have the sign.
All right.
So we have two or three signs.
That will make many people happy in Beller Beach.
I have all the colors.
All right, anything else, council? Thank you, Mr. Reeves. All right, item eight, city clerk report.
What I have on mind this month is just closing out the election process, all the campaign reports and recording things out, will be done for that, and what I have to work with to do that, and that's pretty much finished almost. All right, and then the next thing is the meeting codes supplement, and they, I submitted it, and then they've sent the cost estimate, so, you know, once that was approved, now they'll start working on it to send me the draft. And then public records requests, only two at this time.
Impressive. Great job on the election.
Thank you so much.
Counsel? Vice Mayor Gunn?
Just a, what, the estimate for the meeting code, about how much is there?
Off the top of my head, I don't have a big back count, but it was less than $2,000, I believe. I can get that to you.
Citizens? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. It's item nine, approval of March 7, 2022, city council meeting minutes. Item 10 is approval of March 21, 2022, special city council organizational meeting minutes. Item 11 is approval of March 24, 2022, special city council meeting minutes. And item 12, city council acceptance of the Nellis County 2022 Multi-Jurisdictional Community Rating System Annual Report for Program Public Information, Flood Lane Management Plan, Flood Insurance Improvement Plan, and Flood Response Plan. Do I have a motion? Frank Baker has a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Julie Shirley? There's no discussion during the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda passes. All right, now we're on to item 13. This is consideration for approving alternate citizens advisory committee member John J. Hayes as a regular committee member. The reason why we're doing this is to fill the vacancy for the former committee member , Julie Shirley. Apparently she quit. Do I have a motion?
No.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn, do I have a second?
Second.
Wesley Notaro? All right. Discussion starts with Glenn Gunn.
This is an important committee, and John Hayes has been a positive influence, had attended all the regular meetings, because of his abilities, and has always provided a, I highly recommend him as a regular committee member.
And I believe John Hayes is here tonight. If you'd like to address the council, please, feel free to use the free mic.
John Hayes, 3210 Belpro, Bel Air Beach. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. I served a little over a year ago, I'm now on a financial review committee, and moving to the citizens advisory committee, I thought I was going to be a full member to begin with, but Ms. Shirley usurped me, and it's good that she bailed out to become a council member, because I'm happy to be a full member now. So thank you, councilperson Shirley, for doing that. I do like to serve, and I'm very delighted, I think you have an excellent committee, exclusive of me even, but I think they do very good work to help the council and the mayor in making decisions or recommendations for you to consider, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the council? How about the citizens? Back to the council one more time? All right, let's vote by roll call.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
Yes.
Councilmember Deable?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes.
Seven, wow, that's amazing. Congratulations, Mr. Hayes. Thank you. All right, now we're on to item number 14. That's to review and approve advertisement for the city manager position. Originally several revised versions were suggested, so I asked them and had to select and talk to recommendations. I see that Vice Mayor Gunn added a third one that I may not have been in the running at the time. So has anyone had time to look it over?
Yes.
So what we'll do is we will move Vice Mayor Gunn's into position number three. Currently, there's the first two, and then there's a third one which was on the desk whenever we arrive. Okay, so, yeah, okay, do I have a motion?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Julie Shirley, Lloyd Roberts. All right, Julie, let's go ahead and start.
Yeah, so I reviewed all three. In looking at it on the surface, I think that the draft Glenn Gunn presented is a more thorough approach to, and gives a clear understanding of what we're looking for.
Other council members?
Well, I'm looking at Glenn's, and I just had a few minutes ago to take a look at that, but I think it's very important that we do add what he said, a city council manager for the governance, because that could be important to anybody that may be applying, and I don't think that's in the other two.
Let's see. Says the city manager is appointed by and reports to a seven-member city council. And that's in option one, and I believe in option two says kind of the same thing. I think that all of them will serve the purpose, but I agree with councilmember Shirley that Glenn Gunn's is far more detailed. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I'd say is the only update to Glenn's is, he said some resume of seller history, Y3PM, that's really not good, you need to have received and Y3PM, otherwise people will be on the hook saying, hey, I said it, you know, what's up with my submission? So you need to say it must be received and it must buy at a certain time.
You got a comment?
I'll just address what I made some of the changes. Lynn and I sat down, and you'll see kind of like a boat chart in there too, and just tried to hit the major tasks, we need to think about what to be able to do this city manager hiring process. And Lynn and I kind of reviewed a little bit, he's seen some inconsistencies, and some of the blocks will be moved around or changed, but what I saw, when I initially went through this thing, was that if you look at the third block in the planning phase, which is review and define the job description, and then you look at the application phase, which is the top of the second column, and that's where you post the job description. I didn't know which was a chicken and a egg, you know? My thinking is, I, my expectation was, that as a collective body, we would sit down and kind of think about what we're looking for in the city manager. If you look at the first and second drafts, they were the result of the last hiring process, which was 2017, 2018, and then we had a consultant kind of change the job descriptions in 2019. Well, it's 2022, a lot of things are going on since the pandemics, we're in double-digit inflation, and we've got a lot of new brain trust on the council here who have, they're bringing some interest, personal agenda things for their constituents, and I think as a body, I think we need to sit down and think about what are the new threats, and spend more time looking forward rather than over our shoulder when it comes to the job description. I think some things are changing, and I think it's incumbent upon us to take a good look at that. Now, that can be mitigated by building this criteria for how we want to go through the packages and selecting, but that has to be done before we open any packages, in all fairness. And my concern is, if we haven't thought of some things, or we start looking through packages and saying, man, I wish we had have thought of that, or that's a good thing, I think that's where I see the value of going through this process a little early. And because the process wasn't there, I at least tried to touch on some of those things, to give also any applicant an idea of what we consider valuable, and some of the new things that we're looking for in city managers, because of the times are changing and that sort of thing. I, that was my goal, and I just wanted to hear on some of those things.
Anyone else on council?
In this draft by Glenn Gunn, are you, would you put all these things in your caps as they are in your draft?
No, 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 those were, those were emphasizing the areas where they were inserted into the original draft.
Okay, you wouldn't go out with all these caps, okay?
Just for the draft.
Just yours.
That was just so that you, you could read it and just glean very quickly what someone puts wrong.
Okay, thank you.
So, I like what you've done, I'm wondering if it's possible that we're disqualifying any possibility, or you see what I'm saying, because we're, we're making it so difficult that they may find a way and say, I don't qualify for this, we have no absence, is that possible?
Perhaps, but what I'm thinking is, I'm hopefully opening it up to people who might say, hey, you know, this is just a deep, ordinary, run-of-the-mill city manager job application, and instead try to say, hey, you know, we need a guy with good communication skills, because there are cruise ships, more people on it than we have residents in Beller Beach, and he's a hands-on person, because he's only got five staff, so he's got to be willing to, you know, roll up his sleeve and do some work, and take an interest in the community, and kind of supplement his staff. So I'm just trying to hit on some of the things to open up for people to look at this thing and say, boy, this sounds like a different place.
Or she.
Or, or she.
Thank you. And the other thought process is, maybe we don't want 150 applications that are not qualified. You know, maybe we want to keep it narrow so that we get the pool of qualified people. And then, and then just a question with regards to job description. I know I asked for that because I was going, I don't know how you write an ad without a job description, right? And I know we don't have, what is the plan, I guess this is more towards Lynn, what is the plan there with the job description? Are you working with someone, you know, make yourself what's happening?
Well, we, we have the job description, it's up in 2019, not based on, to 100%.
Yeah, because I, I'd asked her that a couple of times, because it's hard to kind of say, yeah, this ad is, is the spot, you know, the job description says it works.
Very much, yours, what the job, what the, the rest, things that I can't picture. I'd like to just address that one question about the fear of keeping people away, because it seems to be too much. My fear is actually the opposite, I'm afraid that people will submit applications, and they won't emphasize a particular skill that we may decide we were really looking for later on, you know? That the thing where we open up an application, say, gee, I wish we had elicited that as a, as a requirement. So a person submits an application, knowing, or he doesn't think it's important, somebody else emphasizes it, well, we gravitate toward the person who did emphasize it, whereas the other person might have some great experience in that, that could also... I guess I'd rather open it up there, ask for a lot and get a rock draft.
Mr. Baker? Mr. City Manager, you've seen all three proposals, which one do you feel is best, since you've been doing your job for a number of years? I don't want to try to reinvent the wheel here.
Well, like, they all have their good and bad things, I think...
Which had more to do with?
Well, you're one way of spotting, no. I kind of felt like one or two was really, one of those was more directed, but there were some things in Vice Mayor Gunn's that I thought maybe you could add to the people for our... I think you do, you, right now, you just got to have a basic ad to try to be accurate, you know? Now that's what you want. We'll not make the job description, and I'll send that out to you, but it's only a couple things we've changed on it since, since it was done in 2019. But for the most part, 2019 job description is...
That would be number one? Pardon, that would be number one in our agenda?
No, no. The one and two, in mine, and Patty's eyes, were identical, it was just virtually on the ground, that's how I felt. And Glenn's, I thought, you know, something, you know, at the bottom of his, pretty much he's saying the same thing also.
It was just a cut piece from a project, too.
Right. But I think, you know, the comment about due to the small size of the staff, close interaction with the residents, that might be something one had for people, aren't you? But the rest of his, for the most part, is the same as one two. So, you know, I think it's kind of a...
All right, back to the three, you haven't faced one. Thank you. Any other comments? Let's take it to the citizens directly, any comments? Back to the council. We have no other comments, let's, let's do a vote by roll call. One, two, or three.
Can I ask a question? Something I did notice between one and two, yes, was there were differences in a must-have, demonstrated experience in certain things, or the other one said something that are just beneficial, must-have a four-year degree, or something along the lines of requirements of actions. There were some subtle differences there, and again, one was nailing down certain requirements, and one, and one of the others were just saying beneficial. So there was some subtle differences there that you really need to kind of look at, rather than just say, you know, they kind of looks the same.
If I may, Vice Mayor, one of those things, there really is no such thing as four-year degree, you can have a bachelor's, or you don't, unless you're going through five, six, so take it before you're out.
And I guess that's why I put in there, or some equipped, demonstrating experience in certain areas, do you really need to nail that down? I mean, there are people, there are a lot of smart people walking around, and are pointing said best, don't let schooling get in the way of your learning. See, before, it's all full of trees and stuff.
Mr. Reeves, did you say earlier though, you were gonna take the opportunity to go ahead and kind of rewrite this thing, what we voted on it tonight?
Well, I was trying to get some feedback from the council, which we really need to, sort of, I'm surprised about.
The plan was to put something together to have something they vote on tonight, and that's why you have the three options, because we are running out of time for this.
That's why we're all supposed to respond to Lynn's email, did you get a response from everyone? Did you get a response from everyone?
Yes, we got some.
So then, let's vote.
I think we are, and it's a perfect storm, I use that phrase, but I don't think it's, we're in a crisis mode, I think we've got a lot of backup, and again, I think we really need to, the term that comes to mind is make haste slowly, I mean, do it one time, do it right, you don't have to have a backup to think about this. I don't think we're in a crisis mode, at least in the week, early 20, we could have had some discussion on this stuff last week. I'm just a question, is this, we can give you, we saw I should put here or something, especially next week, I want everybody to jump on.
Okay, we have, we called this up for a vote, unfortunately, we have to vote on it. Everyone's given the opportunity to speak, and we have our options between one, two, and three. My advice is that we don't like the ad once it's published, which is why I'm voting. Not, it's agreed, let's do a poll there. Patty, would you please, it's just, everyone's going to pick one, two, or three, if you want to vote on there.
Councilmember Zabel?
Two.
Councilmember Shirley?
Three.
Councilmember Roberts?
Two.
Councilmember Notaro?
One.
Councilmember Baker?
Two.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Three.
Mayor Gaddis?
Three. Sorry, I was so embroiled in this vote, can you give me the count, please?
We had three for number three. Three for number two, and one for number one.
Okay, it sounds like we need to have a recount, and it looks like it's between two and three. Let's do another vote. One is out.
Councilmember Zabel?
Two.
Councilmember Shirley?
Three.
Councilmember Roberts?
Two.
Councilmember Notaro?
Three.
Councilmember Baker?
Two.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Three.
Mayor Gaddis?
Three. All right, it's four to three, number three, Glenn's. And move forward with the advertising, please. Okay, up next, we have consideration of resolution 2022-02. City attorney, please, read the resolution.
Resolution 2022-02, a resolution to the city council of the city of Belle Air Beach, Florida, providing for council to respond to comments by citizens of Belle Air Beach on non-agenda items. That's resolution 2022-02, read by title.
Do I have a motion? Frank Baker, do I have a second? Motion dies. All right, we're on to item number 16. This is consideration of selecting council members as voting delegates. Well, the main voting delegate, in other words, will have alternate voting delegate one and alternate voting delegate number two for the Barrier Islands Government Council, affectionately known as the Big C. Do I have a motion?
So.
Jody Shirley? Do I have a second?
Second.
And Jody, you have the floor?
I would like to nominate Dave Gaddis to be voting delegate one, for the voting delegate from the week two alternates. Lynn and Leslie?
In that order?
Sure.
Sir, I respect your vote.
We still need an alter. Any nominations?
Am I still on the alternate list?
You are on the alternate list.
I would nominate Lloyd Roberts.
He's funny, the side way, he really wants that job.
Doesn't want their eye. They have, I can do more than one.
Would you prefer to be the second, that would be fine? Anyone else? Okay, discussions beyond that. Any comments from the citizens? Nope. Back to the council. All right, so it looks like Dave Gaddis for primary and Leslie Notaro for first alternate, and then Lloyd Roberts for second alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll move over to him there, let's move on to item number 17. Consideration, selecting a council member as voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mayor Dunn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Zabel? Discussion started with Vice Mayor.
Once again, I'll nominate the mayor, Dave Gaddis, he's an important role for the city, and he's served us well on the Big C, I think he's done a great job there, and I don't know how he keeps up with the schedule that he has, but he does the admin for himself. He certainly has my support. Good voting member for the Florida League of Cities.
Thank you. Okay, what else?
I second his nomination, and he can make an outstanding member of that league.
Thank you. Any comments from the citizens? Back to the council. Okay, Dave Gaddis up for the League of Cities, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we are up to item number 18. This is consideration of selecting a council member as voting delegate for the Sun Coast League of Cities. Do I have a motion? And it's Lee Notaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Dunn? Leslie, you have the floor?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm so, Leslie, the floor.
Do you have anyone else that would like to make a nomination? Okay, that being said, I would like to nominate Lloyd Roberts. I think that Lloyd has already been to one of their gatherings, is that correct?
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Citizens? Okay, back to the council. All right, so we're going to have to take a roll call, do Patty?
Councilmember Baker?
Notaro. Leslie?
Councilmember Notaro?
Me.
Councilmember Roberts?
Means what?
Councilmember Shirley?
Notaro.
Councilmember Zabel?
Councilmember Lloyd.
Hard Roberts.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Notaro.
Mayor Gaddis?
Roberts. Four to three, Vice Mayor Notaro wins, congratulations. Okay, we're up to item 19, which is unfinished business. City manager? Back to council. Citizens? Yes, sir. Please go up to the podium, write your name and your address.
John Hanzig, 22nd Street. Mr. Mayor, council, it's more important information. I've been sitting here tonight, again, observing how people are speaking with this new equipment. And I'm having difficulty, and I don't know about anybody else, hearing, because some people aren't speaking into the microphones, some of the microphones are anywhere from 16 to 18 inches away from the speaker. It's not just y'all that you're speaking to. You're speaking to us, the citizens. I would again ask, when you are speaking, speak into the microphone. I know we have a tendency to look at the person we're addressing. If you need to do that, move to microphone, so that we, the people, can hear you. You represent us, but we'd like to be able to know what you're discussing and hear clearly. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzig, and I'm going to go ahead and address that now. This is not a back and forth, I'm just responding to the city manager. The very first night we had this, the system was cranking. I could hear myself, I don't hear myself. These microphones are turned way down compared to what they were on the maiden voyage of our new sound system. And I requested that we turn the gate up next to you, okay?
Can we just take an informal poll, people in the background, who else has had the difficulty?
I would say that the majority of you are speaking into the microphone closely enough for us to be heard on occasion. During a conversation, you back away, your volume fades, and it's very difficult to hear. Some of you, we hear nothing. So I think that you need to make a really hard effort, put that microphone in front of your mouth and keep it there while you talk, in a way, to participate in the conversation.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations? Okay, thank you. All right, now we are up to council comments. This one, we are starting with the council member Baker.
Thank you. Just one comment, and I may be the answer, but maybe, our city manager, help me, what's the rules or regulation of electric bikes on the sidewalks? Because I had one resident, like, they almost had kids, bike was coming against traffic on the sidewalk, and walking their dog, and...
Do I know, is there a new regulation?
No regulation.
The new regulation, we can carry that to our reports a few months ago.
I understand that, but I'm talking about a walking baby.
Anything else to do? All right, Leslie Notaro?
No comments.
Lloyd Roberts, no comments. Jody Shirley?
I just, one thing is I want to say thank you for bringing that to our attention on the microphones, because I'm looking at, some of them are pointed towards us, some of them are pointed away like this, I don't know what we're doing, because these are new to many of us, so thanks for letting us know, and, you know, certainly we need to have some testing and see what we're at with that, so thank you. And just thank everyone for participating, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mike Zabel, no comments. Vice Mayor Dunn?
The microphones are an improvement, we're moving in the right direction, so thanks for the input, and continue to make those quality adjustments.
Thank you. All right, I have one item for you, which is the southbound traffic light. Pull this thing a little closer here. The southbound traffic light, it's causing some confusion, and there are two straight green lights and two left turn arrows, and you're headed southbound. Everyone is confused, they don't know what to do. Is it two arrows in the left lane? Is it, I think what needs to happen is one of those lights needs to be pulled and centered on that one lane that's supposed to take you southbound. I'm seeing more and more people getting confused about it, especially if they don't live here. If they live here, they've already adjusted, but if you could, please reach out to the county and ensure there's anything that can be done. I'm fortunate, I mean, configuration was, if there's anything that's required, I have asked a good sign, and the station, they're kind of correct, current, you know, sign in the book, but I will ask them. On my way to work, I think, not on my way to work, there's an intersection that I pass through often, and if that's the requirement in that particular intersection, it's not up to spec.
And I actually counted that when I first went up there, and I thought, why you got two lights in there? Either bring me down the road or get rid of one. When I pass that bus, you're still in that street, it's crazy, but I'll go back to it again.
Got you, okay. All right, I'd like to thank all who attended tonight. It's important to know what's going on in your city, and it's also important that you be heard. By the way, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Please keep coming back, and please feel free to contact any one of us if you have any questions or concerns. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Frank Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.